Recorder, eh?
Welcome to the council meeting of February the 4th, 2020. We'll start with a moment of silence. Okay, approval of the agenda. You'll announce the change, one change.
So, I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens, that council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February 4th, 2020, with the removal of six dot three dot A, awarding of RFP dash five four eight dash nineteen, the zoning bylaw update.
All in favor? Passed. Declaration of pecuniary interests? None declared. Petitions and delegations? None noted. Acceptance of the minutes?
The motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White, that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 28th, 2020.
All in favor? Passed. Reports of municipal officers and communications? Town clerk?
Okay, so I kind of just put it as a report, since I wasn't sure if I should put it as a delegation or not, if the ladies were not present, but... So, basically, there are some ladies that are requesting a parade permit to bring back the flashlight parade as part of the winter carnival. And that's pretty much all I really have to say about it. The route is on this schedule here. So, the meeting in the public parking lot off Water Lane, start on Market Street, left on Government, turn right on Duncan to Trinity Church. And I have chatted with Public Works and they have no concerns and can give them barricades and whatever else they might need.
Chantel? Let's one ask her a question. Can you turn the mic on, the middle? Uh, just to confirm, this is the whole parade for the Lions Club Carnival?
No, 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 this is just the flashlight parade. I've never been to it myself, but I guess back in the day, it was like a children's parade where they would come with their flashlight. So, it's a bit of like a torchlight parade, but a little safer.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know how long ago the last one was, if anybody can chime in, but it's been many years when you were a child.
Yeah.
Well, it's probably, yeah, well, yeah, so...
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, thanks, Chantel. I'm glad to see, you know, that this, what was started by the Lions Club is continuing to grow. And since I see the parade route and Trinity United Church is right at the end of the parade route, I'm going to approach congregation to see if they would be open to perhaps having the kids come in after for hot chocolate or something.
Yeah, we've already done that. That's already been arranged, yeah.
Oh, did you rent the space?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, even better.
So, we're working with the cadets with that, with Dave Copeland, yeah.
Oh, okay, so, good.
Thank you, though, appreciate that.
Anyways, thank you.
Yeah.
And hopefully, other groups will step forward and help the Lions Club out as well, because it'll make it a true community winter carnival, more like the old days than, than big fancy events. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or questions of Chantel? Thank you, Chantel, and best of luck.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens, that council approve the parade permit to Paul Oyette, Ayette, Oyette? Insurance, Ayette? Ayo, sorry. Insurance Broker Limited for a flashlight parade on Thursday, February 20th, 2020, and that Paul Ayotte Insurance Broker Limited coordinate with Public Works staff for any equipment needed.
All in favor? Passed. Rob Adair, fire chief?
So, we had our first emergency management committee meeting. Some of the topics we discussed were 2019 statistics, master fire plan, capital projects, and the collective agreement award. And some recommendations to come out of that were four quarterly reports to council on the fire department activities, and inquire with DSA for funding for responding to medical calls.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I suggested at that meeting that we apply to DSA for funding on medical calls. We're helping to save lives, we're making their jobs easier, and we're the only community that does this. So, they got it, right now, DSA is getting a free assist on the town of Kirkland Lake taxpayers' dollar. And we all know that DSA has all sorts of funds in reserve that they're sitting on. We're not exactly in a position to be providing what I think is a valuable service free. And I don't know if I'm going to need a motion, but I would like to see council, and I believe I will need a motion, I'd like to see council to direct our representatives on DSA to approach DSA for funding, for providing this medical service. And basically, what the fire department does, and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, they arrive on the scene often before the ambulance, because we have, just like a lot of other things, we have sparse coverage by ambulance. And they are able to stabilize the person in medical distress so that when the paramedics from DSA arrive on the scene, they have firsthand information that's already been gathered, they can assess, further assess the patient, and transport them to the hospital faster. So, it's a life-saving service, but we're not getting paid from DSA for it, and I think we should be. And we're the only community in the DSA jurisdiction that provides a service.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, so, on the DSA board, there's a municipality that they asked, well, DSA was looking, well, let's not call it DSA, the ambulance crew EMS was assisting to a call, and they informed the fire department of that area about the call and told them about the assist, where the area was. The fire department then came back and tried to bill the DSA for their assistance. So, that didn't really work. So, the facts on who gets paid, I would like to know that before we start doing motions, because I haven't seen any facts on how that rolls out.
Yeah, Counselor Adams quite correct, because that billing has been disputed now for two years, probably. So, I think there needs to be some clarification. Counselor Owen?
This isn't an isolated incident. We do it seven days a week, 24 hours, and they're getting a free service from the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake. All I'm asking is that our representatives, I'm not asking that we send them bills. I'm asking that our representatives on DSA go to DSA, explain the service we're paying, explain the cost to the town of Kirkland Lake in terms of manpower, in terms of gasoline, in terms of wear and tear on our equipment, and then ask DSA to come up with some sort of structure for paying for this service. I'm not getting into sending them bills, no, that's not what I mean. But we have two representatives, and I think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake. And if we don't ask, we're not going to get.
We understand what you're saying, Counselor Owen. Yep, Counselor Adams?
Yep, so, part of my campaign was writing on facts. So, if we're going to be asking for these type of things, that's going to be a direction to staff to get those kinds of numbers, because that's, that's a big undertaking, to make sure we calculate our fuel milers. So, it'd be, that would be the first request before we just run to DSA on that. But I'm still confused on the ask. So, like, emergency management is something that I'm involved with that works, and I take very seriously, so, uh, so what we're getting at is a fire call happens, or an ambulance call, and the paramedics show up to provide assistance, and the fire department also shows up? And we want to bill the fire department for showing up to provide extra assistance? Like, can you just, I don't know, can you explain that? And how other municipalities are also doing this?
Rob, maybe you could explain that.
I'm not sure what the, what the question was.
So, we're asking DSA to pay for your services. So, what kind of services would be billed under EMS?
I believe what Counselor Owen's talking about is for when we respond to medical calls.
So, at that point, a call goes in for a medical call?
Okay.
Okay, you're the expert, so I'm just asking. So, how does that go?
Well, we respond to the higher priority medical calls, priority three, priority four. So, the pager would go off and we would respond. And then sometimes we're there first, sometimes the ambulance is there first.
Yep, okay. So, certainly good to have that in our back pocket, because as EMS, we only have so many, for our DSA especially, we only have so many ambulances. And when you see an ambulance sitting at Round Lake, that means they've all had to do a shuffle, because their area covers from pretty much Virginia Town all the way down to Latchford, all the way out to Goganda, I do believe. So, that's a pretty big service. So, I'm very thankful that EMS is able to get, I mean, fire department is able to help in the meantime. So, if we can get those stats, that's when I'd be able to present that.
So, what, the number of calls and the amount of money, the cost in this problem?
Well, if that's the direction that council wants to give, I'm only one person.
Well, I think you're right. If we're going to go to DSA, we need some numbers. And I guess one of the questions, Rob, is it a mandatory service that we are providing? Or is it voluntary on behalf of the town?
We have a tiered response agreement with them right now.
Service agreements?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not mandatory for us to be doing that.
Counselor Casey?
That was my, part of my question. So, all the other municipalities in Ontario where the fire department cover medical calls, so it's the same thing, they just have an agreement with their DSA's or... Because the province, there's nowhere in the provincial legislation that says as if you have a full-time fire department, you have to respond to medical calls?
No, no, we don't have to.
So, you don't have to train paramedics on your staff to be able to?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Owen? Was there any? Well, certainly, we don't have any problem talking to DSA about it. Counselor Adams and myself represent the town on that board.
And I didn't expect Patrick and you to do the research. I expected staff to do that. My, you know, you've heard me say, "Let's not leave any money on the table." Well, here, we're providing a valuable service, and I would never go as far to say we should stop doing it if they don't pay, because it's a potentially life-saving service. And I think that we've got it right. But at the same time, if we could get reimbursed even some of our costs, it's going to be good, a good outcome for both organizations. Now, they can, I know DSA can turn around and say, "No, we're not going to pay." Well, that's fine. I don't, you know, I, I won't be happy about that, but that's their right. But if we don't ask, we're going to continue offering it free. And I just think it's an opportunity to try and offset some of the costs to the fire department.
The only issue I see, and I think Patrick would agree, the way the billing system and the formula is worked out, if they were... The other municipalities are going to end up paying for a portion of that. But wouldn't you say, Patrick? Yeah. That's, could be an issue.
Well, that's why I'm curious about too, why, what the other municipalities are that are paying and that we're not getting our share. So, that's how it was presented at the start. So, I'm just wondering, within our DSA, who's paying if we're getting paid if we're missing the boat? So, I don't understand that one.
No one's getting paid for it, because no one else, from the information I was given, no other fire department within DSA, to miss, I mean, district, whatever, is providing that service. That's the information I was given. I didn't check and verify it, but, so we're the only ones providing that service.
Rob, you're going to have to give us a ballpark figure, because it's budget time. And I think that the next meeting, DSA is going to approve their budget. So, this certainly hasn't been brought up in time.
I can bring back a number next council meeting if you, if that's what you want.
We have to give them some kind of idea of what, what these costs might be, even if you ballpark it.
Sure.
Counselor Adams?
And is it also possible to reach out to the other fire departments and see what kind of agreements they would have?
Yep.
Okay.
Any further comments, or do you want to continue, Rob, I should say?
Are we done with the first report? Are there any other questions on the emergency management committee meeting?
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so the fire master plan update as of October 31st, so that's... Are we going to be getting more items that were all part of the recommendations in direction to council, I mean, staff?
Yeah, I received an email from Eve.
Yeah, and where are we working on it? So, at next council meeting, we'll have an update of, from that report that was May, from May 2019. Yeah, so we'll be answering all of those at the next council meeting, yes.
You can appreciate, Rob, we just got this today, so we haven't gone through probably totally. Do you have any comments in respect to the progress we're making on the master fire plan?
Things are coming along well, I think.
I guess that's good.
The focus for 2020 is going to be on the establishing and regulating bylaw?
Okay. Is he going to discuss the collective agreement?
It's there for information.
Okay. Okay, any further questions, comments? You're off the hook.
No, I have another report.
Keep her going.
So, I have a motion moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White, that council directs the interim CAO to direct the fire chief to A, bring quarterly reports to council on fire department activities, and then B, which I just adjusted to say, bring a report to council with medical call dollars and compare with surrounding municipalities.
You feel that can be achieved?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Passed.
Then the second report was the response times from Archer Drive?
Oh, right, yeah.
And they're all listed there.
So, Rob, this, the trial runs were done with the fire truck and under normal?
No, just in a regular vehicle. These are all at the speed limit.
Is the provincial standard nine minutes, or?
That's the NFPA, fifteen firefighters in nine minutes.
So, all were achieved according to this?
Yeah, the only place you're not going to get in nine minutes is like Inetti and Bernhardt or the airport. But you probably weren't achieving that from where we are right now. And Swastika would have been a stretch for nine minutes, too, but...
So, what would happen in Swastika if the train derailed and blocked the, that road? Would you have to go all the way around to Rose Grove and come back?
Or you could get a hold of Canagami for mutual aid, and they could come the other way.
Do we have a service agreement with them?
We're part of the mutual aid agreement.
Okay, yeah.
Like, that's why we did the tabletop exercises last year for emergency management. We thought was our scenario. So, like, it all depends whether the train can be separated, like... But worst-case scenario, either you're driving around or you're calling Canagami for mutual aid.
Yeah.
And the ambulance would stand by at Round Lake, probably, or the South Y.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah, Rob, I'm just wondering if you had to bring in Canagami, would there be a question of their familiarity, familiarity with them setting up in Swastika? Like, they don't, as a norm, use a hydrant and stuff like that.
No.
And they're pretty widespread, and, you know, to get them together, I'm sure it'd be more than five or 10 minutes.
Yeah, like, this NFPA is, it's, there's lots of departments that don't achieve it. Like, it's just like an industry best practice or guideline. And it's 90% of the time. You'd achieve it 90% of the time? So, you're still allowed that 10% where you're not going to achieve it?
Yeah, when 10% doesn't mean enough, when you got, you're always on fire and there's somebody in it.
Yeah.
Are we looking at, this is probably not a part of this, but if we were looking at a new truck, say, for instance, could we still not go back and put a truck back in the old fire hall?
As long as whatever truck we're retiring would fit into the hall, I don't see why you couldn't. The issue with, I always say with Swastika is, if you go back to a hall there and you have a Swastika brigade, where are they all working? Like, just because you have a truck on that side of the tracks? Or you're going to have 15 guys ready to go on the other side of the tracks?
Well, in the past, it's always been a lot of guys with shift work, which is what you wanted, because you're only volunteers. And not, the only mine is not on this side. Another mine on the other side with a lot of employees.
Yeah.
And stuff, too. I'm just concerned about, you know...
Yeah, I understand your concern, yeah.
Like, we've been fortunate that we haven't had much of a situation like that. But it just takes once for it to happen, and then...
Yeah, but we just have to remember that just because you have a truck there, or everybody that lives in Swastika, are they working in town? Are they working out of town? How are you going to get the guys across the tracks if the tracks are blocked? You know what I mean? I'm not saying don't do it, but...
Like, right now, Rob, there's three or four volunteers in Swastika, is that it?
One right now.
One? There used to be quite a crew out there.
The previous chief amalgamated KL in Swas, just because Swastika was down to, I think, three or four volunteers. And, and the truck that was out in Swas didn't pass its yearly test?
But I would say there's a huge percentage of people living in Swastika that still don't believe, don't know we don't have a fire hall there. You know, so they all, they all think they're protected.
That's possible. They're still protected.
Yeah, okay. I know we had to call Kirkland lots of times as backups in the past.
Yeah.
But we were still creatures there.
It might be worth taking that sign down, because it's confusing. In an emergency situation, people go there and delayed, realize there's no fire department there.
Sure.
Minor point, but it's been there for some time.
That's what I was going to say, you can take that sign.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Because I've heard confusion. I've had other people ask if there's actually a fire department there, so...
Yeah, I agree.
You can go on the next municipal update, too, as well, if you choose.
Any further comments, questions?
Okay, so this was brought back from last meeting, which was deferred until Rob brought back some times for the Archer Drive location. So, the motion I have says that council proceed with dedicating the identified piece of land on Archer Drive towards the construction of a new physical services office slash garage and fire hall facility, and that council direct staff to prepare and post a request for proposal for services associated with the preliminary design and cost estimates at this new, at this preferred site.
Any further discussion, Counselor Owen?
Are we also going to be considering that sort of lease-to-own type arrangement, like companies like Dan Corps offer, and I'm sure there's other companies? Okay.
We will bring, so once we have a preliminary design and a cost estimate, we will look at different options.
Okay, and, and just to explain to the taxpayers, what happens is a company comes in, they, they build it, they own it. We basically have a long-term lease on it, but at the end of the lease, while depending how it's set up, at the end of the lease, taxpayers could end up owning it. It saves taxpayers from having to go into long, a lot more long-term debt, and it cuts the initial costs while providing the service over a period of years that it's paid for.
This comes back to what Counselor Adams has been preaching, but telling us, and I do agree, about Class D estimates. So, these are not going to be firm prices again. It's, it's really a Class D estimate, so, but we need some idea of what, what the costs are going to be. You're okay with that, Counselor Adams?
They're going to give a list of exclusions, and as long as you read that list, I know that's going to cost a lot more than...
Yeah, I agree.
See, how this really works is, when you do preliminary design, you will get an estimate that's as close as maybe 25, 30%. You can only get closer to your 2, 3, 2 to 5% when you get 9% design, right? So, it takes a while to get there. So, so when you do get to, and that's why you'll put contingency numbers at 15, 20%, 25%, right after when you do preliminary, because of that, because there's so many unknowns when you start. Because just changing the type of heating system or ventilation system you put in the building could make the price vary by 10%. So, so there's a lot of unknowns when we start, so it depends on what we want. But we also have to look to long-term as, to put these buildings, energy, as much energy efficiency in these buildings as possible, because the cost of energy is just going up. So, sometimes you have to pay a bit more for that. But the payback on the energy is worthwhile, so... But, yeah, it does take a while. At first, preliminary design only provides you a preliminary estimate. Yes, we have to remember that.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, and as long as when that number comes back to council, we don't champion that cost and then be surprised when it's not. So, we have to be transparent, honest, and it's a Class D.
That's it. There's a list of exclusions that I even budgeted for.
That's right, yes.
I agree. You're off the hook now, Rob. Thanks, Rob. Oh, sorry. We're ready to vote. All in favor? Passed, sorry. Passed, sorry. Physical Services, Municipal Household Haz, and Hazardous Waste?
All right, so I'm here because we need to sign our amended agreement with Automotive Materials Stewardship, And this is directly related to what I talked about last week with the Waste Free Ontario Act, so... Because of the changes that are going on, they have directed stewardship Ontario to wind up their programs, And now Automotive Materials Stewardship has amended their agreement. It's mostly just dealing with dates, there's nothing related to the funding, or funding formulas that's changed from the last time we held an event. So if we want to receive funding for these specific materials, we need to sign this agreement, and we have agreed to host an event this May, So it's in our best interest to sign that agreement.
Receive some funding back from the province? We know what that was last year, and...
The last time we had an event, I believe, was two thousand seventeen, and we... This one would have been specific for the automotive materials, so it's really based on the amount of materials that come in, what you get funded for, So there are specific items that you do not get funding for, so the more paint you come in, the more funding you get for paint, The more antifreeze comes in, the more funding you get for that. So this one specifically would be for oil filters, oil containers, antifreeze, and then the used containers that they come in.
Bit different than the last one?
Yeah.
Councillor Owen?
I just want, I don't want taxpayers to get excited, we will not make money on this, it will cost us money, But at least we're getting something back from the province, and I think we're doing something that we probably should do more often In terms of protecting the environment, so I think it's a good project.
I agree, it certainly saves going out to the landfill site and contaminating the soil. Okay, any further questions, comments? Thanks, Jen. That'll come back as a bylaw? Centennial Committee Report?
So we just have a short report, I actually had a request to provide the information from the chair of the committee, So we thought we'd bring it to council as opposed to waiting until all of the twenty nineteen results were ready. I will become a broken record again, until the twenty nineteen audit is complete, all the audit figures for twenty nineteen, Or all the figures for twenty nineteen are unaudited. So this is just a very, very brief summary. As everybody knows, in twenty nineteen, the town of Kirkland Lake celebrated its centennial milestone. There was a Kirkland Lake one hundredth anniversary committee that was formed in twenty sixteen and supported, promoted, implemented events And initiatives related to the hundredth anniversary celebrations. Now, as part of the committee and the town, during the four-year period, there were contributions made to the Centennial Committee Reserve In the event that the funds were required for the committee to fund its activities and operations. So if we just take a brief look at twenty nineteen first, because that was the year of the main event, The revenues were approximately two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, the expenses were roughly two hundred and nine thousand, And the net revenues were almost nineteen thousand. Now, there was a bylaw that council passed, it was bylaw nineteen dash one twenty-two, it was in December, And the following were transferred to the Centennial Committee Reserve for the year ended December thirty first, twenty nineteen, based on that bylaw. So the twenty nineteen net revenues of eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, and the revenue of sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars That was retained by the town related to the gold coin project, as I say, both of those were in the bylaw and council approved to put them into that reserve. So if we look at an overall from the years twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, total revenues were three hundred and sixty-two thousand, The total expenses were three hundred and seventy-three thousand, for the net expenses of eleven thousand dollars. So my understanding initially back in twenty sixteen, there was going to be twenty thousand dollars put into reserve each year. That did not occur, but as it turns out, the net expenses were only eleven thousand dollars. So for the money that was put in the reserve, it is still in the reserve. So if we take into all account everything that went in and came out, plus the gold coin money, The reserve is actually sitting at a balance of sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. It remains in the reserve at December thirty first, twenty nineteen, and in accordance with that bylaw nineteen dash one twenty-two, The funds will remain in that reserve until a future use is determined by council. So the only thing I would say is, as part of the twenty twenty budget deliberations, you could decide what you wanted to use that money for. The only thing is, I would say, is due to the fact that it's no longer the Centennial Committee, and that event is finished, You may want to consider renaming it, depending on what you want to use that money for. But as I say, that could be part of the twenty twenty budget deliberations, so...
Comments, questions? Good report. Thank you, Sherry. Introduction and reading and consideration of bylaws?
So the motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White, that bylaw twenty dash zero one five being a bylaw To authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Automotive Materials Stewardship, Be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed?
The motion moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Dennis Perrier, that bylaw twenty dash zero one six being a bylaw To stop up, close, and declare the road allowance located to the east of lots sixty-seven to seventy-two, Plan M dash one oh nine, As surplus land be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed? Questions from council to staff? There was one question, could we please have a report of the pigeon trap program from last year? Spring is just around the corner, and it would be helpful to start measuring this program. Ashley's going to provide an update?
So I did pull the stats, we had seven cage rentals happen last year between the months of May and August. All of them came back, so deposits were provided back to the owners. We also had our bylaw enforcement agency at that time actually going out and doing it on his own as well. In terms of the success of the program, I mean, there's still pigeons, so I'm not sure whether we'll ever, we're trying. In terms of looking at spring and what's around the corner, I mean, we could get back to advertising that they are available for rental. Is there any other suggestions or concerns, or anything that you'd like me to bring forward at a future council meeting in terms of the report? Or is that suitable enough?
Was there, Councillor White?
Sorry, so that was seven for all four of them, or just like...
Seven total.
Seven total?
So there was like two or three per cage.
So it wasn't really utilized?
Not really, no.
They didn't give you any numbers as to what they trapped?
No.
Okay. Councillor Owen?
The low use of the traps says one or two things to me, either the pigeon problem isn't as annoying as what we thought, Or we haven't promoted the program enough, and I'm not saying either one is true, But I think perhaps, Ashley had mentioned advertising in the spring, I think perhaps we should really give it a big push on our website And everywhere we can. I'm not sure, to me, it seems like there's less pigeons in town, but they've moved into my neighborhood, So maybe that means there's more pigeons in town, so I think it's something we need to stay on top of.
I should mention that some of the pigeon traps were rented for longer than they were supposed to be, so some of them were like month longs. So even though only one rental happened, it was out for longer than it was supposed to be, so...
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
The motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Rick Owen, that bylaw twenty dash zero one seven being a bylaw To confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February fourth, twenty twenty, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed? Councillors' reports? Councillor Owen?
On January thirty first, I attended an active travel meeting, which was, it's a project being headed up By the TMSMing Health Unit to get students walking to school As opposed to having the parents drop them off at the school, and I was surprised to learn We did a walkabout down Station Road, down Duncan Avenue, along Government Road, and back up to Central School. It's a lot more complicated issue than one might think. For instance, Government Road is considered a hazard because of the volume of traffic, So students who live on the north side of Government Road must be bused by regulation, Even though they live quite close to the school. The one idea that they came up with, and some of the parents are doing it, is that the parents park a block or two away from the school, Say goodbye to their kids, let them out, so they walk that one or two blocks to school To get some exercise and fresh air prior to hitting the classrooms, and of course, with the snowbanks and whatever, But some parents are doing that, and that seems to be working. It also came up about the overhead crossing signs for students at corners, and there was a representative there from New Liskard, And she reported that they have had absolutely no problems with students crossing the road with the overhead sign. So I think that's something that council should look at, maybe we can replace the crossing guard a year, Or the crossing guard every two years with the signs. She said there hasn't been any incidents whatsoever, but I haven't been down to New Liskard to see how similar their sign would be To some of our intersections, so it may not be viable, but it's just something to keep in mind. And Steve and Michelle attended the meeting too, to give input on snow removal and sidewalk clearing And other potential issues that would come up that would concern our physical service department, So I think it was a good meeting, and the town was well represented.
Thank you. Councillor Perrier?
On the twenty eighth, I attended a TMA meeting in Earleton, and I had a guest speaker there, And his main topic was recycle, reuse, and reduce for mainly plastic bottles and all that, And he talked forever on these things, and basically, one thing he did say, you can recycle all you want, But if you leave the plastic cap on a bottle and throw it out, then you're defeating your purpose of recycling. And he went on about all the other kinds of recycling that people do, And unless it's done, done the proper way, he said you may as well just throw it in the ocean like everybody else is doing. So we got to give some thought to proper recycling practices.
So you should leave the top on?
No.
No? My wife keeps reminding me about that.
Yeah, no, he says, you may as well just throw it in the ocean.
I thought I had her on this one, but I guess I don't.
But their main, their main way of getting rid of it is through an incinerator, at very high heat. He said that's the best way, he said, don't throw it in a campfire, because that's not, not good. But in a high heated incinerator, he said, you're doing good. But he had a lot to say, this guy, and he was very interesting, actually. Thank you.
I'd just like to congratulate the Centennial Committee on being named Citizen of the Year. I see there's a couple of members from the Centennial Committee. Thank you for all your hard work, and certainly deserving of the recognition as Citizens of the Year, so congratulations. Adjourn?
Have a motion moved by Dennis Perrier, seconded by Rick Owen, that council adjourned to an in-camera meeting pursuant to Section two thirty-nine, Bracket two Of the municipal act to discuss three proposed land dispositions.
All in favor? Passed?